Twenty twenty one, the pledge will be led by Commissioner Alford and our indication by North Cleveland Baptist Church student minister Jason Cox.
Stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Lord Jesus, we thank you for this day, and I thank you for the opportunity to be here to just pray over this group of people. Lord, I ask a blessing on them today. Lord, I ask that you direct our paths, make our crooked paths straight. Lord, I thank you for each person that's here willing to do the work of the government, the hard work of the government, Lord. Father, I pray blessing on them. I pray that you give them wisdom and guidance. So many of them sitting up there today have impacted my life in a positive way, and I thank you for them. And I pray that they continue to do that for our community movement forward. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor. We need all the prayers we can get. Now, a report from our county mayor, Mayor DeS.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, everyone. Three things for you, first of all, our COVID report, as you probably already heard, the number went down to four oh five active cases on Friday evening. We've not got a new report yet. Hospitalizations were down over the weekend also, so that's good news. Commissioner Epperson sitting here beside me will be glad to know that we were able to complete another maintenance and infrastructure upgrade this past week. The landing outside of planning and inspections is now level. He was unable to sleep at night, he said, because it was still in the wrong way. So we got that leveled, jacked up, pumped up, and it looks good. It's a good landmark, Commissioner. Okay. A lot of people are interested in the proposal from the AARP money, and finance is going to be meeting in just a little while, but I'm going to go over the buckets. Next Monday, we'll be asking you to approve the overall plan. Keep in mind, the plan does not give me any authority to spend money. It's just that it's an approved plan, so we can write a plan and send it into the U.S. Department of Treasury, another one of federal government's many, many requests. Remind you, ten point five million we have received is in the bank. And for those people who just don't get it, I've been sitting on it. The money's in the bank account, and I have no authority to spend it until a budget is approved later on this month or next month. So ten point five million is in a bank account, a separate bank account, several, and drawing up little interest it can at this point. And then we do expect to get another ten point five million sometime in twenty-two. We're still waiting on the final rule. Federal government promised it in September, and I told you not to hold your breath, so it didn't come in September, it didn't come in October so far, and probably won't come until after the first year if then. But we're working out of the interim rule. They have acknowledged during this time that anything we do based on the interim rule will be honored, so that's, that made us feel a little better. I'm proposing six buckets for eligible spending. That's what I call the overall twenty-one million dollar plan. And if you'll bear with me, a lot of this will show on the screen, but I'm going to share a lot of information, and I'll be happy to try to answer questions when we get through. I'll be proposing six different buckets. Essential worker premium pay, public water infrastructure, broadband infrastructure, sewer infrastructure, COVID response, affordable housing. These are six areas that are in that big notebook right here on the desk that indicates that you can spend money on, still a lot of questions to be answered in some of them. However, the first one we'll address a little further in a few moments because it's fairly, we're fairly confident with what we can do in the first bucket. These six buckets are in this order based on your all's prioritization and also the input that we took from the public. We've got a lot of input from them, and they rank them pretty much the same way you did. Premium pay for essential workers, public water, broadband, sewer, COVID response, affordable housing. COVID response is what that area is called, and we'll get into that in more detail in a minute. First of all, the essential worker premium pay. When we look at the buckets as a whole here in just a minute, I've got seven point one million dollars put in a bucket, the first bucket, for essential worker premium pay. I think everyone will agree that there has been overwhelming support for taking care of our first responders with a portion of this money. When we present the plan, once it's approved, I will be declaring in that plan, in that plan, that all county employees are essential, along with employees at Bradley County Health Department, Bradley County Healthcare and Rehabilitation Center, as well as the nine-one-one dispatchers. I'll be proposing a two-tiered system. Tier one for first responders of ten thousand dollars. Tier two, all other employees of five thousand dollars. Some of the stipulations. This will be a one-time premium pay bonus. It does include part-time employees. You heard the story about cleaning the courtroom. Well, the persons that cleans five courtrooms in this building are part-time people, so we are including part-time employees. Part-time employees included and calculated at half of the amount of full-time employees. Another stipulation is they must have been employed as of July the first and still be an active employee on the date of the check. And all elected officials are not included in this proposal. We acknowledge that pay in many of these departments is below market, and we lack competitiveness with other counties in this area. This is only a short-term shot in the arm, so to speak, for these folks. It's a way of saying thank you to those who did work during the pandemic and continue to work for Cleveland, for Bradley County government in the Cleveland area. Unfortunately, this is not a long-term solution. We all know that we need to be addressing salaries down the road as much as we can and afford to, so we will also begin to look at pay and benefits countywide. As inflation and wages rise in the public and the private sector, we must look at what we can do to improve where we are for our employees. Setting the pay and benefits across the board is a place to start. I believe these amounts are reasonable and still allow us to invest a good portion of the remaining twenty-one. We'll be looking at the overall, the overall plan here in just a minute, but keep in mind, twenty-one million is the amount that Bradley County was allotted, and we're here marking in this proposal seven point one million dollars in the first bucket for essential workers. The second bucket, according to your all's ranking, as well as the public, is broadband. We need for more broadband in Bradley County. We've already met with BUC and together have identified almost two million dollars that we can earmark towards grant application that will be going out, I believe, right after the first of the year, as they, they will be submitting that grant, and we will be joining with Volunteer, matching that grant with, and partnering with the state who has a four hundred, I think it's a four hundred million dollar bucket for broadband that they have. So by joining together with Volunteer and the state, we'll be able to do a lot more than just the four million dollars. But like I said, in this first application, we look at applying for nearly, almost two million dollars as an hour match. And then, once that is spent, we'll either have the opportunity to enter the grant opportunity with the state, or we will partner with Volunteer to continue more broadband throughout Bradley County. Public water was third on your all's list, I believe, as well as the public. We need for more water, public water in Bradley County. And this will give us opportunities to partner with any and all utilities. We've already talked to Cleveland Utilities and O'Koy Utilities, and they're willing to partner as soon as we get our questions answered, I guess. There's still some, we really think that the state's going to come out with a program similar to broadband, where they will put a lot of their bucket in the form of a grant, and then we can partner with Cleveland or at O'Koy and match that grant. And again, it'd be a lot more, three point nine doesn't look like a lot, but if we can do it as a partner with the state, it'll be a lot more than that. The fourth bucket, sewer, three million dollars, and we'll be able to partner possibly with Cleveland Utilities and/or O'Koy Utilities. Again, we don't know if T-Dak will have grants in the form of sewer or just water, but we're confident they'll have grants available for one or both. And also, on the subject of sewer, something to keep in mind, you're only approving the overall plan next Monday, if someone puts it on the agenda, but you will come back and decide how you want to spend each bucket before time to do so. And something to think about is forming a sewer fund, sort of like we do the water fund, where we could partner with the public to help a lot of our residents with their failing septic systems. The fifth bucket, COVID response, two million dollars. If it works out, this one is real iffy at this point, but if we can justify it as a COVID response, we might be able to use money in this bucket, two million dollars is what I'm suggesting be in this bucket to start out, or EMS, possibly fire vehicles and equipment. We also think we'll be able to use some of it from HVAC units at places like Bradley County Justice Center and the nursing homes, if we can show that it's improving ventilation for those people that are there. Affordable housing is a definite area that is eligible, and again, we would partner. We wouldn't just be spending a million dollars, but we would partner with Habitat for Humanity or City Fields or both of them with, with this particular bucket of money. This year of the twenty-one million, we only got ten million for one hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. And what I'm proposing in the overall plan is in this first money that we spend, seven point one million for one-time bonuses or premium pay, whatever you want to call it, and it would include money for that initial commitment for BUC broadband. Says here, one point six million, we're not sure how much they'll be awarded, but up to two million in this first round. And then the remaining funds could be spent for other public water and affordable housing as you all see fit. The twenty-two breakdown, then, if we get the next budget money next year, ten point five million would be coming, which would include more money for broadband, maybe in the form of more grants or outright paying for broadband, partnering with Volunteer. It'll include more money for water projects, and it will have the three million dollars for sewer in it. I'll stop right here. Don't forget not to confuse anyone, but there is another fourteen million dollar bucket of money that will, the state says it will be sending next year to all counties. Bradley County is on that list for fourteen million dollars, but that is to be spent in the form of grants to utilities. But, for example, if Cleveland Utilities needs to upgrade their system, or if O'Koy Utilities needs to upgrade their system, they will apply for grants from Bradley County to use that fourteen million. We won't have the option of spending it any way we want to. It's got to go to utilities. But that fourteen million dollars will come in handy as we expand public water and we expand sewer in the county. That's going to cause them to need to do upgrades and so forth. I'm sure you're accumulating a lot of questions, but I'll be finished in just a minute, and we'll try to answer them. I'm asking you to do two things today, and then I'll take your questions. I'm asking that the premium pay be addressed as bucket number one. I'm sure that will go to finance in a little while to get their recommendation on whether they want to make changes or whatever, but in order for that to move forward, it's going to take a lot of time because we're involving a lot of people. I'm sure a question you'll ask, and probably many of you didn't realize, this essential pay, the way I've got it in the proposal, is seven hundred and fifty-seven people. It's actually more than that because a lot of them, if there's two part-times, we count that as one because they're half, so it's actually more checks than seven hundred. So it's about eight hundred checks, and no, in case you're thinking they're not all in our system. So I'm asking that to be addressed today in finance, so that we can have the checks out to everyone sometime in November. I've heard comments from many of you that you'd like to have them by Thanksgiving, so hopefully that will be the case, sometime in November. The other five buckets, it's, it's, I know some people don't want to address anything but the one bucket now, but I really need to, need to address next week all six buckets because that's what makes up the plan, so that I can present the plan to the U.S. Treasury as an approved plan. Keep in mind, it doesn't authorize me to spend those buckets, it's just our plan of how we're going to spend them. And then each bucket will come back to you all to approve individually, how you want to spend it. The only one that you will be addressing, hopefully today in finance and then next Monday, will be bucket number one, is pay for essential workers. Remember the order of the buckets. That's based on your input. I didn't make those up on my own and also from the general public. It was great to know that they were pretty much in harmony there. But anyway, if, if this commission, someone would put on the agenda next week to, we'll have a resolution in the form of a resolution after today. I'm superstitious, I don't want to have one ready before you ask for it to be done, but I would hope that someone would put on the agenda next week a resolution to approve the overall six-bucket plan, with the understanding you can make changes later, and that you will have the authority to approve each individual bucket before they are spent.
I'll put that on the agenda, but I do have a question. If I put it on the agenda, out of those six buckets, I know you have what you want to go with those six buckets, and it's just a plan to present at this time, but can we change the amounts that are going into those buckets each time that we start to dive into?
You can. That will be our plan, but keep in mind, no authority to spend, so it will come back to you to authorize to spend the two million, for example, with broadband, even, because that bucket's not approved yet, so that will have to come back to you all to approve. And then finance at that time will approve an amendment, which gives me the authority to, to spend. So you're approving it as a plan, and, and at this one, it's just a plan. It's, it's.
Okay, because I, I might think that, well, I do think that sewer needs more in there than something below it, per se, but I, I'll place that on the agenda to, if, if that's the understanding, that we can change the buckets, except for the premium pay, we are going to send that to finance. I look forward to hearing finance and all the recommendations, but I will put that on the agenda to approve as an entire plan, as long as we can change them later. If we need.
And that will be fine. We'll have a resolution to that effect. Just remind you on the comment.
Commissioner, this resolution, we haven't seen yet. We will be able to offer a substitute motion on this resolution, right?
Always.
All right, thank you.
No, you've not seen it yet, but it will reflect what I just explained to you. And the comment about more money in there, just keep in mind, they're ranked according to your priorities, and there's only three things ahead of sewer: water, broadband, and essential workers. So if you want to replace one of those three and leave sewer ahead of it, that's your prerogative. But my proposal has them ranked according to your rankings and the public rankings.
Mr. Epperson.
Thank you.
Go ahead, I'll try to take questions.
Okay. I just wanted to ask a question and make a comment. You said something about the state, how much fourteen million would keep going and it could be utilized for utilities only?
Yes.
And I'm in the process of, look, reviewing the draft of the Bradley County Water and Sewer Master Plan, which will be presented to us here probably in two to three weeks at work session. And then, in there, in the plan that is being proposed, we're looking at about eleven million dollars with sewer projects going out into the counties in about five or six different areas. Could some of that money be used with the state to kind of implement our plan that we, if it's approved by the commission, to move forward with it, plus the three million? And, and also, we could get grants also, and they go into detail about how, how we could apply for grants to, to kind of help a lot of areas around Bradley County.
The three million you would use to match grants, that's for sure. The fourteen would be going to an O'Koy or a Cleveland Utilities to use for their upgrades of their facilities, their, their utility upgrades, they're not expansions. So we won't have that.
You would be able to use the fourteen million on some of the proposed mine going in.
The way I understand it, it's not out yet, but the way they explain it is we're going to send it to each county to grant out to the utilities, every utility in your county to do upgrades.
Okay, because we roughly have about eleven million dollars in this proposal.
But for example, if it works like broadband, the broadband grant might be six million dollars that we get, but we're only earmarking two because it's going to go to the grant and the state will match the other four, so it becomes six. So that very same thing could happen with sewer grant at that time. But to make sure you understand, and I'll go in more detail on the bonuses, I'm sure that's where the interest is today, that's the only bucket that next Monday you will be approving based on finances recommendation this afternoon. Once you approve it, that gives us the authority to do a budget amendment and to do the checks at some point. These other buckets are part of an approved plan. Keep in mind, before we spend money, we have to present a plan. We don't have to present how we're going to spend every dollar, hardcore spending, but just a plan to spend it. So I'm not trying to lock anything in. Substitute motions are always accepted, but we're not locking anything in except the bonuses, and on next Monday, the bonuses hopefully will be locked in. That's up to you, but everybody seems to be wanting to move fast on it, so it will be in your hands to lock in next Monday, and then sometime in November, we'll be able to get them done. Is there something I failed to mention? I'll knock any of that. All right, did that kind of, on that, just don't, that, there is a seventh bucket. We haven't received it yet, and it will be kind of locked in of what we can do with them. They've told us, we're going to send it to you, and here's how much you would get. Instead of them doing it, they're going to send it to us, but you've got to use it with, give it to utilities to use for upgrades.
And for their facilities.
Right.
For any of the things that's in this.
But some of those sewer lines may require an upgrade to their sewer facility, so they could use that money to upgrade their sewer facility. So indirectly, yes.
Yeah, and, and it's good, too, that we've got some numbers now that we can work with with this.
Okay, I'm sure you've got lots of questions, especially on the bonuses.
Commissioner Schler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, can we, can you send us a copy of the presentation that you just went over so we'll have the presentation?
Yes, yes. And the buckets that are on the screen on paper look like this, the six buckets, and that and the resolution will be on the lorry. Now that that's on the agenda, that one will definitely go on the lorry, and you'll get it out tomorrow probably. Picture of the buckets, as well as the wording in the resolution.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
Mayor, are you feeling distressed like O'Koy? Are they, are they already familiar with the issues taking place?
They are. Now, quick question. If you're talking about the fourteen million bucket, the state actually notified all utilities, hey, we're sending money to the counties, and they will have money to work with you on upgrading your different facilities. So I think all the utilities know that that money is coming, and according to what you all approve at some point, I assume we'll have fourteen million dollars that we'll grant out to the various utilities. We'll know upfront. We're the ones that have to answer to the federal government how it's spent, so that way you'll, you'll make the rules, okay, we're going to grant this out to you, but we want how it's going to be spent in writing, so that, you see what I'm saying? Because we're the ones that, they don't have to pay it back, we do, if that makes sense. That's on the fourteen. The other, yes, O'Koy and Cleveland both know that there's probably going to be an amount of money in the, in the bucket for water and for sewer.
Commissioner Schler.
Mr. Chairman and Mayor, the essential workers, the bonuses that we, we're all agreeing need to go quickly. Who makes the decision who's in what category? Will the department heads have an opportunity to?
I'll, I'll go in more detail. We have worked with all of the departments fairly closely, the elected officials. I don't guess you can ever be one hundred percent on the same page, but we've tried to get there. There's two tiers that I mentioned, and I only mentioned tiers, I have one more detail. Tier one is your healthcare, your paramedics, your EMTs, your nurses, your CNAs. And that's both that Bradley County Ambulance Service, at Bradley Healthcare and Rehabilitation Center, as well as Bradley County Health Department. And then, in that same tier, the ten thousand dollar tier, is your post-certified sheriff's department employees and your TCI-certified sheriff's department employees, which gets your patrolling and your justice center people. It also includes juvenile department people who have inmates and also were cleaning the courts, as you heard, and it also includes EMA. And then it also includes all firefighters. So basically, law enforcement, firefighters, and health care. And then after that becomes all other county employees, pretty much. And all other county employees does include the road department. It includes the ones at the sheriff's department that weren't in those categories. It includes the ones at the ambulance service that weren't in those categories. And the nursing home, for example, it includes the others that weren't in the healthcare category. So that kind of answered your question. And nine-one-one just.
Rest of the day.
I heard you mention the health department, and I absolutely believe that they should be included in this, but I know that some of them are state employees, so how is that going to work with giving state employees bonuses?
That's what I meant earlier when I said, don't everybody's in our system. Our nine-one-one employees, our health department employees, and our nursing home employees are not in our system, but they will, in my proposal, they would get the, the bonus also. Thousands of people that got tested or went through line getting their shots, those were health department employees, technically are state employees, but they're Bradley County Health Department employees that gave you your shot, and so they're in this proposal. Now, how that will work, if you're not a county employee, is we will send a check. By the way, the number got bigger than some of you thought because we have to pay social security and retirement. So let's use the nursing home, for example. They are preparing on this with their employees in the two categories, totaling them up, multiplying the time of social security, multiplying the times of retirement. We will write one check to the nursing home, and they will do as, through their employee system. Does that make sense? And the same thing with, with nine-one-one center and probably at the health department. See, the health department, even though you mentioned they're state employees, most of them are in our system because the way the health department works is we pay them, we just get paid back from the state. So they meet the category of health department, healthcare workers, but it is a little bit different setup, so we will still, they're in our system, I believe, is the answer to that on that one. I don't mean to be vague on this, some of them get complicated, and we've tried to work through as many of the complications before today as possible. And that's why next week, if you approve this first bucket next week, that will still give us some more time needed to actually get those checks out, because not all of them in our system.
Mr. David.
And so the health department would be included in tier one?
The health department's healthcare workers are in tier one, and they're one of those areas that, they're all in there. Yeah, they're all in there. It's the nursing home that has both. And we didn't include office people in the same level with others in most cases. Health department, they were all out there at that tent all last winter in freezing temperatures.
You also mentioned nine-one-one, and we had talked about the city maybe taking a portion of that. Did they agree to pay their half of nine-one-one?
I, I shared with them. I don't think it was addressed last week. I think they only addressed another area. I can't speak for the city, but I have gone forward with the amount for nine-one-one dispatchers, it's the same as all other county employees in half. We fund nine-one-one center fifty-fifty, so our half is in this proposal, and I think they will come along and do the other half. That's, that's, that's what we're hoping for. Others, I don't, I don't want to leave you confused, Mayor.
Commissioner Alford and Commissioner Black.
Just a question, Mayor. Who did you consult with to come up with your buckets and numbers in those buckets? Was that consulted with any commissioners or just you and your system?
As I've said about three times already, your rankings at premium pay for employees is number one.
I know that.
That's number one.
I understand that, but how, when, how much, when you talk about these figures, what, who did discuss the, like, the ten thousand dollar bonus or the two million here, two million there? Did that discuss with anybody else?
It was discussed with a lot of the departments where they thought it should be. We've heard ranges from three thousand to fifteen thousand. In putting together those totals and putting them in a bucket and still having money in the other buckets that were also in your priorities as well as the citizens' priorities, keep in mind, this money is to invest in our community. Now, again, the amounts in buckets, as Commissioner Epperson, you can go from three to five in sewer before you approve that bucket, and you move it, you can move it around, but I didn't need a plan to send. The only one you would be locking in is the seven point one million. If you think that's too much, then lock in five point one million, and we'll lower the bonuses to match it. The proposal is ten thousand and five thousand, which comes to seven point one million, which in the rankings is number one, just like your rankings were. The proposal is 10,000 and 5,000, which comes to 7.1 million, which in the rankings is number one, just like your rankings were.
Mr. Black.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, we're just, we probably get this in finance, but just so, anyway. All county employees, is that defined as those employees that are paid out of this budget?
As opposed to who are?
Well, I guess, you know, obviously the general fund, we know he's paid out of that, the sheriff and EMA and so forth. But we also have some others that are paid out of, I mean, well, they're considered county employees, like our tri-state.
Tri-state is in there as other.
So tri-state is going to be considered county employees?
Everybody that we do the payroll for, plus road department that does their own payroll, plus the three that we will send a check to, health department, nursing home, 911 center. I believe that's all. And then firefighters, even though they're not general fund, they're in our system.
Okay, I was just trying to, because there's, there's, we did the accounting piece for a lot of people in the back office piece of it in our budget, but they pretty much do their own. They have their own boards, and they have their own directors and stuff like that. So just to clarify, it would be nice if it's all possible. I know we're moving at light speed here, but that's good. A list of all employees and basically the amount that they're going to eventually be awarded. I mean, that'd be really good. If that's possible.
We do, and everybody should look at it is really the answer. I mean, and I say everybody, everybody that's a county employee is included in either 10,000 or 5,000. And the difference is paramedics, nurses, health department, sheriff's department, firefighters are 10. And just in your mind, assuming everybody else is five, in this proposal. Does it include everybody? If they're a county employee, it includes them. If they're a 911 dispatcher, it includes them. If they're a nursing home employee, it includes them. And if they're a road department, it includes them.
So we can, on a list, get a list of all the employees, is that possible?
I don't have a list of the employees, I got departments. For example, GIS, two people, tri-state, three people, elections, two people plus one part-time. County court clerk, 28 people plus two part-time. So I mean, there is a list that we had to have to come up with the 7.1 million.
All right, okay, good.
Not, not by the employees, but by the department.
Okay, that's, we'll take that. And then I guess you answered the question about part-time and full-time. Part-time is going to be treated like full-time with respect to their tier.
Part-time is in the.
So if they're, if they're a tier one, I'm sorry, if they're, if you designated them tier one, and they're part-time, they're going to be treated just like a full-time? And if they're in the tier two, part-time and full-time are going to be treated the same?
Part-time is half of the part, of the full-time.
So if they're in tier one, half of the tier one, so in other words, in that case would be 5,000. If they're in the tier two, part-time would be 25,000?
Right. And the easy one is EMTs. There are a lot of part-time EMTs. They still get bonuses, but not as much as when it works every day. So, yeah, they're included, but at half.
And then we have, I know this is getting into my big details, but it's very important, I think, is those that cross, do multiple jobs for the county, so to speak, and pay out multiple. We have some, I think, firemen who do some work for EMT and some other things like that.
And then I don't get the one check.
Okay. I just made sure.
At least in my proposal. That fireman will get one, but yeah, I'll put somebody, some of the firemen then who work part-time for EMS. They're not counted as part-time over there, they're, but they're anybody's.
But they're paid, they're paid out two different funds, right? When they work for EMS, they're paid out the EMS account, and when they work for fire, they, they get paid out there. So just verification on that part, on their duties and stuff. Then I guess the last question, sort of, is, this is technically, if I understood that PowerPoint presentation that the state did, they retro pay. And then this is, this is paid for what they did in the past, you know, stuff like that. So they asked, they came up with, I forget the day, someone, March of 2020, 2020 is when, quote unquote, technically the pandemic started, so to speak. So those, the range of dates of those employees and the start date, because if you had someone who started last week, so to speak, so you're going to have to have a line, sort of, like we do with raises and stuff like that, of who qualifies for this and stuff like that. Have you given that some consideration as well?
Yeah, of course, that's, that's up to you to change if you want to. In this proposal, the number reflects part-time employees at half, the full-time employees had to be employees as of July the 1st and still be active at date of check and no elected officials.
PowerPoint officials. We'll get that in finance, but there's, there's some, there's some that are covered by state law that you have to pay a certain amount and all that kind of stuff. They're not elected, but they're appointed. We'll get that in finance, that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Thompson.
I just picked, say, you're getting it all messed up here, at least to the county mayor here. He found explaining.
Well, I mean, I, I know it's, there's a lot here to digest, and then there's still other questions for finance to address in there. We've gotten as many of them as we possibly could. We're trying to get it to the point where we could announce, here's what we can do and what it will cost, and still have money in these other buckets. And the 10 and 5 seems to be more agreeable than any other number. But you can, finance can recommend those changes, I mean, that's, that's fine.
Mr. Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to make sure I understand one, one point correctly. The janitors are, what tier are they? And they work every day of the week, should they not be considered full-time? And as a budgetary constraint, we probably made them part-time, but they work every day of the week. What tier are they?
You talking about?
The two people, whoever cleans.
The cleaning people of the courthouse, they're both part-time people. They are included, but they're included at half of what full-time is. They don't work full-time hours, or they'd be full-time employees, so.
They're in tier two.
They're in tier two. Other employees is what they would be under the number of it. It's 158 plus other employees, which means other employees, in this proposal, they get 5,000, they would be 25,000 for working part-time.
I tend to disagree, but we'll discuss that in finance.
The person working full-time might just tend to disagree too. But if somebody working part-time gets the same two, yes, but anyway.
Is elected officials not county employees?
Election commission?
No. Elections officials.
That's something you can always change. It's not something I would ever propose from myself, and I'm not going to propose it for everybody but myself. So I don't think elected officials ought to get the bonuses, I'm sorry.
Well, that's your thoughts, but I don't, I think different, but that's okay. Because they are county employees too, and I'm not talking about us sitting up here, I'm talking about employees that work for the county every day. That's my thought.
I know they.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have, I know they answered this because they're elected, but like our constables too, they're elected, so they don't get it.
Who's that?
Our constables, they don't get it either because they're elected.
They're not, they're, they're elected, but they're also not county employees.
But if they.
Mr. Kraft.
I guess, now I'm a little confused, which is not unusual sometimes, but they, they are elected officials, but they work full-time for the county government. Aren't they included as recipients of the check? I mean, it's not their, it's their job.
That, that will be up to you to, to include them if you want to. I just personally don't think elected officials ought to be included in bonuses, but.
Well, I, I agree on myself, but I'm not talking about, I don't have a job working for the government besides me and county commissioner, but there are some that work for the county government that's a full-time job. And that's the point I'm trying to make.
That, that will be up to you in finance if you want to include elected officials. I answer the taxpayers, and it's not in my proposal, I'm sorry. I do want to say this. We will have a second resolution for this, and I know finance will be here in a little while, but respectfully ask that someone put this resolution on the agenda next week so it can be done based on finances recommendation at part-time. This is on the bonuses, the first bucket. You go down the general. Now, explain again on that.
Explain that again.
If you, if, I need a resolution, if you want to move forward with bonuses, I need a resolution on the agenda next week approving the first bucket and how much you want to spend. 7.1 is in the proposal. You can change that, finance can recommend changing it to 5, 1, or 10, 1. But I need that resolution on the agenda so it can be approved next Monday. And then I will still come back to you to finance with the budget amendment setting it up, authorizing me to write those checks.
Or finance can approve a resolution and bring it to the full commission next week, like we normally do.
It's up to you.
Commissioner Pete. Well, explain what, then Commissioner Pete, what is her resolution first of all?
The first one is the resolution that will approve the overall plan. Not authorizing me to spend any money, but approving the plan, and that's the six buckets, which is 7.1 million for essential workers, 4 million for broadband, 3.9 for public water, 3 for sewer, 2 million for COVID response and EMS vehicles, and 1 million for affordable housing. If that resolution is approved next Monday, then we will write a plan to send to U.S. Treasury saying, here's the plan that we're going to be doing over the next year. The difference in the two is the second resolution addresses just one bucket. It says we want to approve 7.1 million with the following tiers, however finance recommends to change it. Then that gives me the authority to move forward with that. Does that make sense?
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I understand. It is two different things. One's broad, and one's then is more pointed toward just the one bucket. After next Monday, I think I will have the authority to spend money out of one bucket, not the other five.
Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I remember reading in the paper correctly, and these bonuses that go into our essential workers, I think are really, really great and substantial. I think they received about $12 million. I think the city did 11, 12 million. And they are giving their essential workers a $2,000 bonus. So we are, your proposal is a lot more than what the city's did. Thank you.
Commissioner.
City key tag there.
I think, just since you mentioned that, I think their plan is to do more on the investment part, whether it be water, sewer, I don't know, but or housing. Our biggest bucket, and again, based on your all's rankings and the public's rankings, the number one ranking was supplemental pay for essential workers. So that's why I put more there, and that's why they take it to the mail.
Any other questions? I know a lot of them will be addressed in finance. All right. Anything else, Mayor?
Now, we got both of those on the agenda, so no, that's all I have. I appreciate it, sorry to take some of them, thank you.
Reports from committees and districts, we will start to my right, Mr. Everson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Everything doing good in the first district. I do like to acknowledge some improvements on some of the roads, Candy's Lane. There's a lot of people excited about that coming to completion. There's a lot of our constituents in the first district looking forward to seeing how we fix the project moving forward. And did get an email and a few calls about the landfill, but other than that, I think it's doing good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, good to be here. Can I just say, is he still back there? Yeah. Welcome, if anyone mentioned you may have. Welcome Jeff Stewart back from his long vacation in Vegas. I think he enjoyed the inside of the hospital room for a while out there, but we appreciate seeing you back, Jeff, glad to have you. I'm sorry.
I didn't see him there, but I ran to him the other day, and he told me, he assured me, you will never go to Vegas.
I don't think I ever wanted to go back to Vegas either, Jeff. We're glad you're back, thank you.
Hi, Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Everson touched on one of the things I just want to talk about. I've got complaints about landfill myself. Also have a gentleman here, Cecil Chris, does want to speak with us. If you, he spoke with us before in the past, and he's dealing with some property that's there on the corner of Freewill and Georgetown. It's a situation started many years ago, and I think he wants to speak on that. Now, Mr. Chris was, is semi-heard up here.
Everybody's. Should we speak into our microphone so he can hear us?
If you're in my face, I lip read, but otherwise I hear you, but I don't understand what you're saying. I've been there for 61 years, so I got beat up one time by the ball bat. I'd like to say, my name is Cecil Chris, and I'm 91 years old. And I've filed federal income tax for 65 years. I've never been in trouble with the law, other than two speeding tickets in Collinsville, Alabama, and one in Corbin, Kentucky. But being a nice guy hasn't got me anywhere. I've had a 32-year-old problem, and, but I'm a little nervous if I get ahead of myself. 32 years ago, Bob Hughes said, let's get that school bus off of the Highway 60. Let's do something for the kids. Let's work out something here. Well, they put that road in there, and they built in a waterway and put a road there and made a waterway over here. And they messed it up so bad, it had to take 13 truck loads in there. And then I took a door and then bladed it out to where I could maintain it, and 57 feet wide. Well, now the state, I've done, lost my case to the state, but they said, I don't own that. Because it's a waterway, 57 feet, all the way across the front of my park. They wanted to deal with 44 feet wide and 29 feet long below my driveway. So I had a hearing, and the judge told me to get a lawyer. Well, I tried, nobody wanted to take it, gave me five paid it out of my pocket. He says, they only wanted to deal with what the state had offered. Nothing else. Even the surveyor said, we just, we can survey what they said they're going to take. But I, I've tried everything, and I couldn't get no, the judge says, bring me something back here. I couldn't, because I couldn't get no help from nobody, absolutely nobody. So I advised, well, you won't get no more money than what they offer. You won't be in the money in the head if we take it to court. And I've got a bad water problem out there. Years ago, the part of the subdivision up there behind me had to disconnect all of the washing machines from the septic tank and run it out on the street. So they cut a waterway down there, and I'm just being washed away, and I can't get nothing, nothing done about it. So the state now, the states are going to put this road in here. And keep undermining that road, they're going to have to put a grand big old border wall up, like rocks, something that I can't maintain. And I tried my best to work with the road department. And every time they call down, I, once she's not here, I'll have you to call you. I wanted to show, I've been working with a contractor and landscaping for over 35 years. I know what that road's going to look like. And there's several, several damage there, a lifetime that I'm going to have to put up with. So they first offered me $300. And I wouldn't, then they went up to 1,600. Now they, the final offer, the judge that said, oh, you papa to give it more money? They said, yeah. So they went up to 25. So they went up to twenty-five. Well, the lawyer says, you'd be better just as well off it, take what they offer you. So that's what I did, and they charged me three hundred dollars for damage for, for that hearing. So, I wound up with sixteen hundred dollars for all of that, and they got restrictions on that. When you put the, put this road in here, they've got three years for construction easement. After three years, you turn it back over to you, and you have to pay taxes on it and maintain it, but you don't own it. Try going across some state lines, but this doesn't happen. And if I wanted a subdivision, I would do whatever I wanted to do, I'd have to go through the state. Now, I've, I've been getting a wild deal, I was, I was around when we had justice of the peace instead of commissioners, nobody. There've only been two men that ever recognized, that was Mike Hughes and Stanley Thompson, after all of these years.
Mr. Chris, I think to explain it better, because I, I know the situation, I understand because I spoke to you several times. To help everyone understand what's going on, it's back thirty-some odd years ago, the county came through and took some of his property in. It was an agreement that was made between them, however, there never was a quick claim deed done, so the road was shifted once up around his property. He paid taxes for that throughout the years. The state came back through, took more property, and never paid him for the entire, they just paid for where the, the section they had taken, not realizing that he had actually owned much more property in that, however, they, they never did show up, because the claim deed was never done to set that property in to the county. So hopefully that explains a little bit more.
How much property are we talking?
I'm not sure how much that is. I, I don't know if Stanley has that or not, or if it's, it might be something he can get for it.
Stanley could use some.
Yeah. Yes, Cecil. Shut it up.
I, I think we looked at it, it may be between an acre to acre and a half of a strip, and like you said, it was basically done in, what, thirty-two years ago? Basically, I, I lived at Hope, well, I know where, where he's talking about was a big ditch, they moved the road over, and county has maintained it. We never changed our records, we didn't have deeds to change them, and we never did. So he has been charged for that acre, acre and a half, whatever that is. I, I'd have to pull my record to see exactly what it is, all these years, so he has been taxed on it, so. That's kind of, that's kind of it in a nutshell, so.
Are we re-immersion him for that?
That's, that's up to you guys. Like I said, my, like I told Mike before, I can do, if it's an error, you know, current year and one year back, that's all that I'm.
And how many years has he been paying on it?
Probably thirty, thirty-two years.
Sounds like he owns it, to me.
Tell that to the state.
Do we have an amount of money with you?
No, I haven't, I haven't worked on anything on that.
You pay taxes on it, my experience has been you own it, I don't know, maybe I'm naive.
He, I know, I've, I've worked with Cecil and worked with the state a little bit, trying to help them out, and didn't work out very well, so.
Yes, you refuse to talk to him, because he wasn't my attorney.
Yeah.
Commissioner Pete.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, this is a work session, so let's work this out.
Okay.
So, if, if these things are possible, if this guy's paid on it thirty-two years, is it not possible for us to quit claim deed him that?
I wouldn't say so, you probably talked to the county attorney on that, but that's kind of already, it's already happened. I probably would suggest a quick claim deed to get it out of his name for sure.
Oh, you'd get it out of his name, but where?
That'd be, probably, county would be part of it, and probably state the other part that they've taken, so.
Because the state, the states already bought that property.
They've taken a little.
They've taken more than what they may.
Yeah, yeah. This is, it's kind of hard to explain without showing you. It's, it's kind of like, let's just say there's a, I, I'm just going to throw numbers out, say it's a seventy-five-foot strip that the county took all these years. State came in and took, say, thirty-five feet of that. I'll just throw numbers out, but they took a part that really the county owned, but they, on the records, it looked like he owns it. Is that, is that kind of?
So did the state pay him for it?
They paid him twenty-three, twenty-four, minus your.
I wound up sixteen hundred.
Yeah.
But they paid him thinking that he owned that?
Yes.
Okay.
So if you looked at it, there's probably, it would be state right away, probably what the county still owns, they're using, and then Cecil's.
So to clean it up totally, we would need to put a quick claim deed back to the county.
Uh, yeah.
We'd have to find out from the attorney, but that's probably what needs to happen.
That probably needs to be, yeah.
It needs to be cleaned up, so that his deeds reflects what he has.
Yeah.
And he stops paying taxes on all that.
Yeah.
But they have noticed that he, and, and I'd like to see how much total he's paid for that.
Yeah, I have to sit down and, because we've got several years, several tax rates and values and such, it'd be, yeah, we'd work it out, figure it out.
Okay.
Commissioner Crick, Commissioner Hughes.
It would appear to me, what about the zone, is it residential?
Uh, I believe it was FAR, I'm not sure.
Same, same thing, we don't get up in.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, it's not commercial.
It would appear to me that we can quit claim the deed from him to the county, take the twenty-five hundred, I think he said twenty-five and sixteen, whatever the state paid, subtract that from the taxes that he's paid, and then the county would appear to me that we have an obligation to pay them.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be that much, but I'm just throwing numbers around, I, but it would appear to me that when you take that sixteen or twenty-five hundred, whatever it was, back from what he's already paid, if it's FAR on an acre and a half, it shouldn't be that much annual.
Tax off.
Commissioner Hughes.
I, I think Commissioner Pete and Commissioner Criss is heading in the right direction of where I was headed with it, was I think that it's, it's time that we make this right for Mr. Chris. I don't think it was something purposely done, it's just something that needs some good housekeeping going on. But I definitely think we need to make this right for him.
Commissioner Pete.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Thompson mentioned that you really need to see it to, to see what the problem is. I would propose that all of us, we just set up a meeting like we did with the tires, and go out there and see it, as many of us as can, and everyone can, invite the media, of course, since we go on, I like the sunshine a lot, but that way we go out there and take a look at it.
Possible. Now, I have an issue back to Mr. Epperson and Commissioner Alford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chris, I was going to ask a question, you had mentioned something about the waterways and the, and the roads.
Please, please, spill the tea.
You mentioned something about the waterways and, and the road being moved, and it caused your septic system to not operate correctly?
No, you're talking about the subdivision, I was talking about my back.
No, I was talking about your septic tank system. You mentioned it, it started failing, and you had to take, you had to take the washing machine or something off of it?
Something, something.
Oh, okay.
The septic thing, I was just talking about, the subdivision, if I, if it had problems.
I would just want to make sure that something didn't happen that caused damage to your septic. Thank you.
Commissioner Al.
If we're going to run a quick claim deed on it, would we not have to have that surveyed so we know exactly who owns the state, the county, him? Somebody might do a quick, I mean, a survey.
All of this needs to be run by Crystal.
Yeah, we need to.
I know, so we do this. Before I think we do anything, you have to be certain.
It does, and to be perfectly honest, it's got to be rectified, because someday, Mr. Chris, I hope you're, I hope you're around a hundred more years, but you might not be here a hundred more years, and that property's got to be settled about, you know, what it is in the correct way, so that needs to be settled.
Commissioner White.
Would you ask Mr. Chris what he really wants us to do? Ask him that. What, what did you want us to do?
Cecil? They want to know what you really want them to do.
Well, I don't know, there's nothing to do with it. Saying I'm sorry, but that's not.
We need one word like him.
Really disappointed, because they put a roadway, a waterway, put a waterway over here, now they're going to put a road in that waterway, and move another waterway over here on me, and tell me I don't own that.
Well, I, I think, Mr. Chris, it is, we've seen this with situations before, where people have, and unfortunately, no one has, nobody, we didn't, nobody had any documentation, that somebody said on this date, and go back and look at the minutes in the archive, you know, hopefully, which is a mistake, I mean, that's not right, but I'm just saying someone screwed up a long time ago, and now we're trying to see if we do that correctly.
Commissioner Pete.
You know, I can tell you, after all these years, somebody would listen to you.
Mr. Chris, we are sorry, I'm sure it was unintentional, nobody ever, you know, nobody ever did this on purpose, I'm sure, but we're going to make it right somehow. So, if you can get with Stanley, tell him what you want, and then Stanley can bring us back all the numbers, we'll figure out how to get a survey, and we'll bring it back to a bigger work session, and vote to do whatever we think we need to do, and get with the county attorney to see how to make it right with you. That's my opinion of it, but we need some answers, and if Stanley, if you can get all the info we need, find out what he wants, and, and we'll jump on that survey, we've got a few people that could maybe rush it, everybody's booked.
See, the state has already closed the deal, or the state has, they're not.
Right. Oh, we know, we, we, we're just going to make it right somehow, some way, yeah, you recognize her.
Gloria?
Yeah.
You, you have a little background on this, so if you want to come, come on up here and kind of help us.
Well, unfortunately, this all was handled before I got to the road department, but I do have a little bit of knowledge about it. I do know that what he's speaking of makes a lot of sense, and I know that he sat here for probably thirty or forty minutes, if y'all remember him, I don't know if it's a commission meeting or work session, and talked with Sandra on it. And so naturally, the situation is like, our hands are tied, because there's not anything we can do about it, because it did happen long before she was ever in office. So, I mean, I would like to see it resolved too, and I'm sure Sandra would as well, and I apologize, she could not be here today, but, you know, she's looked at all avenues as well, and, you know, what you said should have happened a long time ago, but, you know, and hopefully it can be resolved for Mr. Chris and for everyone concerned, and thank y'all so much.
Commissioner Hayes.
Commissioner Hughes. Mr. Chairman, is this something that I could send to finance to discuss possibly doing the survey and kind of moving forward a little bit more? Since our meeting today gives them time to talk about it a little bit. I know they're not going to have all the information until Stanley gets some things together, but it'll start the conversation.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, we need to see if the county attorney has kicked some ready.
Let them talk, tell the attorney.
It will, if they don't have the proper process, that's what.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I believe that's all I have today.
Will you, after we talk about all this stuff, kind of?
I will.
Touch base with you, so he knows what was going on.
I will.
Okay.
Second district, do anything else, move on.
Thank you, Commissioner Al. Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, it's come to our attention that the final resting place for our loved ones is not being properly maintained. I use the word again, because how many times have we had good citizens come to the commission and request assistance for some kind of corrective action? Too many times. Besides it being just the right thing to do, families are paid for their final resting place of their loved ones to be properly maintained, I might add, it is an embarrassment and shameful. I, like many of you here today, have driven throughout southeast Tennessee and noticed the grave sites in other counties are properly maintained and intended to. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Commissioner Slater, the next legal and legislative committee to place on the agenda the discussion with Bradley County Commission, or what Bradley County Commission can do to rectify this, to correct this situation, and put in place whatever controls are needed, so that we don't have to deal with this ever again. This complaint is unbelievable, and enough is enough, thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
I couldn't agree more.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blake. Mr. Pete.
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Criss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What cemetery are you referring to, Commissioner Blake?
I do, but my understanding is someone, it's the same owner for Brother Somerset, which we've heard many, many times, and the other one here just south of the city.
It's Hillcrest this time, not Somerset. It's not, honestly, it's one of those, but has a ways to go, and a Hillcrest has been ignored, I agree, I just wanted to make that clarification.
Oh, thank you.
Second district, still a five.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Thompson.
Commissioner Blake.
Go ahead. Good, thank you, sir.
Charles Wilton, Phil.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Chairman, well, two, three things today. Received a call from John Thompson about Reese Across America, and this will be, sponsors will be fifteen dollars each, and this will take place December eighteenth afternoon. John just wanted to kind of, you know, it's October, but you want to get things out there. And I'm challenging all my commissioner colleagues Saturday to come out with me. Household House Waste Day is at the sheriff's office, be from eight AM to noon, Bradley County Justice Center, twenty-two ninety block that, and if you look back at your phone, you can get there. And I'd give a big shout out to Steve and Bridget at one-on-four-one, and they could announce this on, on their show this, this week, and get this information out there. We'll look forward to seeing you Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Mr. Davis.
Oh, as well as six.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Crick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Three or four things. First of all, I want to announce that we have an insurance committee meeting this Wednesday, October thirteenth at noon, it will be here in the commission room. Next thing is, is I didn't exactly get my wish as far as meeting, so I'm going to ask Mr. Chris, can I come out and meet? So.
He wants to come out and see your property. He wants to come out and see your property.
Okay, thank you. Would you, Mr. Thompson, would you tell him to leave his phone number, and I will contact Ms. Moultrie and go, go that direction?
I get your phone, I get your phone number, tell him.
Last thing is this, and she has no idea that I'm going to do this, but, and I would never do anything to embarrass her, but, but I want to send my condolences to Ms. Davis, she lost her father recently, and, and I just, I lost mine recently, and there are just no replacements, so, you know, you, it's one of those things, you, you don't get over, but anyway, I'm very sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crick.
Let me share those condolences as well. Been flying all over the country, get here to this meeting today, thank you for being here. First of all, we should be celebrating this coming Thursday, Sixty Highway, we'll have a groundbreaking, begin the construction of Sixty Highway, which is, you know, a long time coming, we're excited for that. Also, today is the State of Tennessee Day of Prayer, and fascinating, I think our governor said, now, there's a scripture that says, blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. And if we had more prayer and less talk, I think we might get some things done in this world. Also, the committee that I chair, the juvenile committee, will be meeting this Thursday at three o'clock in the juvenile center. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Moving into the agenda, how to make, Mr. Blake.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, the redistricting is coming to, I guess, alert as well. The redistricting committee that you, we talked about last week, met, and we are in compliance with the rules, so I think I've already had this on the agenda for next week, but just to reiterate that we have to get this done. It'll be sent up to the comptroller's office, and then it'll, it'll come back to us for the form of a signature. Uh, it'll be sent up to the comptroller's office and then it'll, it'll come back to us with a form of signatures. And then the election commission will send out visas to those people who are affected one way or the other. So, uh, again, thanks to all the members of the redistricting committee, thanks to the election, uh, administrator and the, uh, Matthew Hill, the G I S director, uh, in the comptroller's office. I had a chance to meet with him after the meeting the other day and he said, uh, you know, we did a pretty good job and, uh, you know, things ran smoothly. So redistricting twenty-twenty is coming to an end, so, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Adam Beck, Commissioner Hughes.
It's a resolution to rezone from forestry, agricultural, residential to district to high-density district property located at Mich, Michigan Avenue and Wilkinson Road. And identified by tax map zero-four-three parcel zero-one-two-point-zero-zero. And that can be seen on pages ten and eleven. Uh, this did go through rezoning and passed unanimous.
Commissioner Hughes, I would say.
It's a resolution to rezone from rural commercial district to highway commercial property, uh, district property located at four-forty-one Dirkie Road and identified by tax map zero-five-eight A, group A parcel zero-one-three-point-zero-two, and that can be seen on page twelve to thirteen. And that was another one that passed unanimous through the plan.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Pete.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Bentley, I have a few questions about this one.
The first one or second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, uh, this property, is it Elkin's property?
Yes.
Okay, but somebody else is making a request?
Yes.
Uh, when did it go from residential to commercial?
I think it was when you adopted zoning in ninety-nine, at all times.
Okay, since I pulled it up on your G I S, or on Stanley's site, and it says it's residential?
No, it's commercially zoned.
Okay. Stanley, you might want to take a look at that on your G I S.
You looking at the right one?
Uh, yeah, your, uh, property search application?
Yeah, I'm going to look at it.
It just says property type, Ed Elkin, residential.
That's, that's basically what it's being used for, this residential thing.
Okay.
That's more the assessment.
All right, and Ed's okay with this?
Yes, he's selling it.
He's selling, okay. And what neighbors? Do you put the signs up and the neighbors are okay?
Yeah, I didn't call it on.
Okay, it's across from the school just for you guys to look at.
Mr. Thompson.
That's, uh, that's how, that's how it actually been in that area. The lady there had commercial at her house there also, which probably never been changed to commercial, but there had been commercial activity there for many years. So for this located at its commercial building, uh, it's a little tight building, so, I don't like. Uh, the neighbors having problems with that.
Anybody else have a question? I'd like any of these. Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Communication from the audience, anybody want to have anything for the commission? Yes, ma'am? That's your name and address.
Deborah Gleason, United BiCorporal Road. Um, I'm just, was sitting here listening to the money issue and how we're dispersing it. And I was just a little bit confused and maybe this has been discussed and maybe you can enlighten me on how it was supposed to be dispersed. But I, as I understand it, the county worked in the black through this whole period of time. And government and state workers didn't lose their job and miss a paycheck, as I understand it. I was under the understanding that, and maybe this is kind of late in the game, and I didn't think of it, really didn't think of it because we were thinking about, you're going to take the money, and we were more concerned about that. But my concern is, I thought that the money was supposed to help businesses that lost their businesses and people who lost their jobs. And I don't think any government, state workers or county workers lost their job or a paycheck. So I'm asking, should we not consider the money that's going to utilities and other places that have been doing just fine, as I understand it from what we hear? And utilizing that to help those who were really devastated through all this, losing their businesses and losing their paychecks and their jobs and livelihoods? That's just my question. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else else want to speak to the commission?
Uh, I just want to say, Howard, appreciate you wanting to give us a bonus, but I don't need a bonus. I'm going to put that out there, just to let you know that. I'm good right now. I, I, you know, like, like she just said, didn't miss a day of work, didn't miss a paycheck. I just, we're good. Uh, as far as my employees, I'd be, I'd be remiss to say, hey, we'll take anything we can get over there. Uh, I'd rather have a thirty-five-hundred-dollar raise for each one of them. That way it goes on into the future, but we'll take, we'll take the bonus now.
Thank you, Stanley.
Anybody else?
Okay. Announcements. Next meeting, voting session Monday, October eighteenth at noon here at the courthouse. Upcoming events, finance committee right after this. Isaiah House one-seventeen, community leaders drop-in. That is tomorrow from eleven to two, between that timeframe. Uh, insurance committee, October thirteenth at noon here in the commission room. Juvenile committee, October fourteenth at three o'clock at the juvenile center. Household Harvest Day, Saturday eighth to noon down at the sheriff's office, which Mr. Mason's asked us to come by. The Apple Festival, Saturday ten to six, and Sunday at one to nine here downtown, Boardhouse Square. And then Isaiah House one-seventeen ribbon cutting, Sunday, three P M. We are adjourned.